Welcome to the October 21st, 2013 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor David Hustleton from Big Beaver United Methodist to provide the invocation for us this evening. If you would stand please and remain standing for the Pledge Allegiance after the invocation. Pastor?
It's our tradition in our church on November 1st to give thanks for all those who have passed on in this past year. And as we begin this meeting, I invite us to just remember those that have served this city faithfully, that have gone on to the great reward this past year. So let's take a moment of silence to remember these individuals. We are here to conduct business, O Lord of this city. And as we pause, we give you thanks for those who have have served this city and continue now to serve this city so faithfully. Especially, we lift up the mayor and the city council that you will guide them in their decision-making this evening. And in a country where competition is so prevalent, whether it's between Troy High and Athens, or between the Tigers and the Red Sox, or even competition amongst the election coming up in just a couple of weeks, we pray for cooperation here in this place, that we can make the right decisions on behalf of the people of this city, and that will move us forward. So this O Lord, we lift up in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Bitner?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
All present? Our first order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations. I will come down to the podium and meet Cindy Stewart with the Community Affairs Director, Maybe you could introduce yourselves first, and then I'd like to present a proclamation.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Padma Kuppa. I'm a board member of the Hindu American Foundation, and a member of the Bharatiya Temple. And really, I'm excited to have Troy be proclaiming the holiday of Diwali, which is celebrated by a billion people worldwide, but by thousands of people here in Troy. Sikhs, Jains, and Hindus all venerate the importance of this festival, which is like the Christmas of the Hindu, Jain, and Sikh community. And we're very excited to have this proclamation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Namaste. I am Jagdish Kariya. I'm the president-elect of Bharatiya Temple. On Friday, it was an exciting day for us, when Troy Chamber of Commerce recognized newly-built Bharatiya Temple as the best building in Troy. So we are excited about that honor. And I'm also pleased to thank Mayor, who has been supportive of our temple. And as a token of Festival of Lights, Diwali, we have brought some goodies for all the council members. And what we call Aarti, a Festival of Lights, you can light it on Diwali Day. It's a good auspicious event. So that's all for you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Give me your Padma, because I'm near—
You're gonna have some—hopefully, it's okay. Okay.
I just might need some help with the pronunciation of a couple of words here. So Padma's gonna be so kind to help me and make sure I don't make a terrible mistake here. But I would like to give this proclamation to recognize the celebration of Diwali, the Festival of Lights, November 3rd, 2013. Whereas the Hindu American Foundation and more than 1 billion celebrants worldwide relevantly observe the holy day of Diwali to mark the beginning of Hindu New Year. And whereas, Diwali, the Festival of Lights, symbolizes the victory of Dharma, and good and evil, and is—
Good over evil.
Good over evil, and is one of the most celebrated festivals of Hindus, Sikhs, and Jains. And whereas, Asian Indian immigrants are the largest ethnic group of immigrants in the metro area, with about 5,000 living in Troy. And Troy is also home to one of the oldest and largest Hindu temples in Michigan, the Bharatiya Temple of Metropolitan Detroit. I've been there several times. It is fascinating. And whereas, the U.S. Congress and House of Representatives officially passed unanimous resolutions in 2007, recognizing the religious and historical significance of Diwali. And whereas, Diwali is a time for dana, charitable giving, and seva, selfless service, by bringing light in the form of wisdom, knowledge, nourishment, and shelter, in order to alleviate the tangible forms of suffering, such as hunger, disease, and poverty. And whereas, the shared Indian holiday of Diwali signifies the special time of peace and serenity, with the hope of building bridges of understanding and tearing down barriers of intolerance. Now therefore be it resolved that Detroit City Council recognizes the religious and historical significance of Diwali, the Festival of Lights, and Diwali's message of tolerance, compassion, the victory of good over evil, which resonates with the American spirit. And be it further resolved that the city of Troy proudly expresses its deepest respect for Indian Americans and South Asian Americans throughout the world, and here in the Troy community on this significant occasion, as we celebrate the Festival of Diwali on November 3rd, 2013. Presented this 21st day of October, 2013, is signed by myself and all members of City Council. Congratulations, and what a wonderful event. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I just want to add one thing. Troy is the second most diverse city in Michigan. Ann Arbor is the most diverse. Tonight, at 7:10, Ann Arbor proclaimed Diwali. We are a half hour behind, but the two most diverse cities, we did it.
That's great. Next order of business is C2, the presentation from the U.S. Melting Pot Club. And I see Cindy Stewart, our Community Affairs Director, is at the podium.
I'd like to call up Dale Murish and Waylu. They have a PowerPoint presentation for you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for introduction, Cindy. Good evening, council members and fellow citizens. We appreciate this opportunity to introduce our club. It's my honor to represent our key club members tonight. Next slide, please. USA Melting Pot is neutral on politics and religion. The objective of this club is to build bridges between all ethnic groups, and to celebrate our culture background, including American culture, so we can break barriers between people, understand each other better. Next slide, please. The original melting pot was to have people deliberately lose their identity, and become homogeneous in American culture. Multiculturalism celebrates separate ethnic identities without mingling, which act as celebore. Instead, we are promoting a new philosophy in between. Next slide, please. On the left is a celebore of multiculturalism. On the right is what we emphasize. Singing the wall installs some windows, open them, and build and cross bridges between groups. Next slide, please. Why Troy? As we just heard, Troy is the second most diverse city in Michigan, so that Troy has more ethnic groups than most of other cities. Many of our—however, people here don't mingle that often. Many of our colleagues at GM Powertrain are foreign-born, and live in Troy and Rochester Hills. We enjoy learning about each other's culture, so we also have members and friends around the globe. The idea originated on Election Day three years ago, when I voted for the first time after becoming U.S. citizen. We started the planning in 2011, and held the first meeting in last May at Troy Public Library. So far, we have introduced 12 different cultures, and their festivals like Diwali, along with other different hobbies. We also held Polack Picnic at Troy Historical Village last August, to lunch and learns at GM Powertrain, and participate in a Team GM Workday at Gray Centers of Hope. We have gotten regular publicity in Troy Patch, Troy Times, and MIIndia.com. Our website, USA Melting Pot, has past presentations and info about future events. Now I want to pass to Dale for more.
This is our website, USAMeltingPot.org. Marcus Chen is constantly upgrading it and adding new material. Club philosophy and description of our logo are up here on the left, and past presentations are posted over here. Marcus wants people, more people, to post their events, articles, and comments, so you can contact him by email to register as a member. The spammers are pretty persistent, so he had to turn off all comments except for members. You can also—recently, he also added some advertising, so if you buy through Amazon link on our website, our club will get a percent of your purchases. We appreciate the Troy Library letting us meet there for free. It meets our budget, which is low-budget. You can also access our travel spreadsheet through the link on our website. Next slide, please. Waylu Gao has collected common phrases from a bunch of different languages, starting with, "Excuse me, do you speak English?" You'll learn how to say hello, goodbye, and the most important phrase in any language, "thank you." So he did the pinyin for the Chinese language, for those of us who don't read Chinese characters. So you can say "xixi" for "thank you," and "ni hao" for "hello." Walter Beragon, our friend from Brazil, gave us Portuguese. And we also have German, French, Italian, and a bunch of other languages. Next slide. This shows some of our past presentations at the library. Fangwei Shi presented at our first meeting in May, last May. And Bob Paul and Bill Hughes presented on bicycle touring. And then in November, Rick Reason came from south of the border in Windsor to present on Canada. He works with us at GM Powertrain. I've traveled widely in Canada, but over half his presentation was new to me. You can check it out on our website. Lots of interesting things about Canada. In December, Council Vicente Sanchez spoke on Mexico. And then in January, Joya Shepherd presented on African-American culture, and we had a panel discussion on the Civil War that segued from that in February. Here's some pictures from last summer. Ajay Pandey presented on India. He presented again at a lunch and learn at GM Powertrain. And then here's—the hobby topic for that month was canoeing and kayaking. Heather Canoe Rental brought in probably the biggest visual aids that have ever been in the Troy Public Library. They trumped the bicycling guys. And next slide. Last year, we had our picnic at the Troy Historic Village, which was very interesting. Since many of our club members work at GM Powertrain in Pontiac, we decided to have a Team GM Workday at Gray Centers of Hope there. DeWakar Krishnaya is who's here tonight. His hometown is Bangalore. And Shridhar Patil is our club ambassador from Bangalore, India. That's where he lives. These two guys were there, helping out. And then a lot of our club members are—spoke multiple languages. And so these people were working together on DeWakar's project of rebuilding some steps on the back porch of a house. And Yuri got to brush up on his Russian. He spent part of his childhood in St. Petersburg, so he was talking with Boris, who came the farthest, Irina's husband, from St. Petersburg. Next slide. Here are club members and friends assisting the miracle on Seneca Street. Gray Centers is turning Pontiac around one street at a time. They're taking people from homelessness to homeownership. It was a pleasure to help people who were helping themselves. Next slide. Waylu will show some more pictures from our workday there this Saturday, October 26th, after our main speaker, Fatoum Matar. She was born in Suzanne-Marie, but—and she will speak on her Yemeni heritage. We hope many people can come to the library at noon this Saturday. Visit our website to keep track of our future plans. That's the link there. We'll post the complete text of today's talk. We had to shorten it. And backup slides, including bios of the six club leaders, that'll be posted soon. Thanks for the opportunity to give an update. Any questions or comments? If you could skip ahead to the last slide there, that shows the club leaders. Yeah. Any questions? From anybody on the council?
Questions, council?
Well, thank you. Any club members that are here, could you please stand and be recognized? Thanks for coming out tonight. Antonio is here, and DeWakar, and Yuri, and Shridhar. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you for what you do for Troy. It's greatly appreciated. C3 is on behalf of the City of Troy Employees Casual for Cause Program. Cindy Stewart, Community Affairs Director.
As you all know, we dress casual once in a while. For the month of July and August, we raised money for cystic fibrosis. So we have a check for them for $585. And today, this is—here with me is Mary Ellen Kearney, and she's gonna talk a little bit about cystic fibrosis.
Thank you so much. Thank you. My name is Mary Ellen Kearney. I'm a Development Director with the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation. And on behalf of the foundation and the 30,000 Americans living with CF, I would like to thank you all, all of the employees of the City of Troy, for your continued generous support. Cystic fibrosis is a genetic disease that affects the lungs and digestive systems. It makes it difficult for our patients to breathe and absorb important nutrients from the food that they eat. Currently, CF is the number-one genetic killer of children under the age of 18, and there is not a cure. But because of donations like this, and the support of local communities and individual donors, we are making great strides in the fight against cystic fibrosis. I'm very, very excited to share with you today, that over the weekend, we announced that the median life expectancy for a person with cystic fibrosis has been raised from 37 years to 41. And this is a direct result of initiatives like this Giving Campaign. So I thank each and every one of you. Mr. Mayor, I thank you, all the council members. I thank you for allowing the city employees to choose causes that are important to them to fundraise for. Individuals like you and your employees are making a significant difference in the lives of our patients and their families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Concludes our presentations this evening and certificates. There are no carryover items. No public hearings are scheduled this evening, so our next item is public comment for items on the agenda. Generally, I read a brief statement about public comment this evening. I've been asked to read our rules of decorum in its entirety, so please pay attention if you're going to speak this evening. The audience should be aware that all comments are to be directed to the council, rather than the city administration or the audience. Anyone who wishes to address the council is required to sign up to speak within 30 minutes before within 15 minutes of the start of the meeting. There are two public comment portions of the agenda. For the items on the agenda, speakers can sign up to address postponed, regular business, consent agenda, or study items, or any other item on the agenda. Speakers can sign up to address all other topics under items not on the agenda. Also, there is a timer on the city council table in front of the mayor, and turns yellow when there is one minute of speaker time remaining, and turns red when the speaker's time is up. And please adhere to those time limits, so that I don't have to stop you when the red light goes on. In order to make the meeting more orderly and out of respect, please do not clap during the meeting, and please do not use expletives, or make derogatory, or disparaging comments about any one person or group. If you do so, then there may be immediate consequences, including having the microphone turned off, being asked to leave the meeting, and/or the deletion of speaker comments for any rebroadcast of this meeting. Speakers should also be careful to avoid saying anything that would be subject for them to civil liability, such as slander and defamation. Please avoid these consequences and voluntarily assist us in maintaining the decorum befitting this great city. There are several people signed up to speak this evening, and please be civil this evening. I know it's the last meeting before the election, but let's please be civil this evening. Our first speaker to speak public comment for items on the agenda is John Weir, resident to speak on KO2A. Good evening, Mr. Weir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of the council. I would like to speak on the proposed rewriting of the ordinance for the snow removal along mile roads. I am John Weir, 41-year resident of Troy's Windmill Point North subdivision, with a property line 108 feet adjacent to Long Lake Road. Early spring in 1973, I was installing a fence around my property and couldn't decide whether or not to install a gate on Long Lake. I decided to check with City Hall and see what, if any, responsibilities I had along Long Lake Road. A gentleman at City Hall listened to my question and quickly answered, "Mile roads that are not frontage are the responsibility of the city." Everything was fine for the next 35 years. When out of the blue, I received a letter from the city informing me that I had to clear snow along Long Lake. The rest of the winter was mild, and I didn't hear anything more from the City Hall. During the 35 years that the city apparently acknowledged responsibility for Long Lake, no one was—no snow was ever removed from the sidewalk on Long Lake Road, and grass was only cut twice a year at most, a standard that really doesn't qualify as a standard compared to what the city wants to hold the homeowner to today. Having residents who do not live on main roads maintain grass cutting or snow removal is unjust for several reasons. It is a tax shift from the entire Troy state tax base to a few citizens. The financial and labor burden is much greater on main roads than residential streets. Three, residents who back up to mile roads do not get any benefit from them than any than every other citizen in Troy. There are at least two more safety hazards that people don't encounter on residential streets. First, the tax shift. Based on the figures presented in the September 19th, 2013 Troy Times article, last year's snow removal would have cost me $439.63, in addition to at least $320 to cut grass twice a month for eight months. I can only view this as a tax shift of $759.63 from total city tax base to me. Financial and labor burden. I have shown the financial burden, $759.63. I have 53 feet of sidewalk to clear on Dayton Drive, the street where I reside, but an additional 108 on Long Lake, an increase of 200 percent. Grass cutting is an increase of 1,300 percent, because I have 2,376 square feet of grass to cut on Long Lake. No other residents of Troy have to clear more than one street, except corner lots. And most corner lots are two-side streets that don't have nearly the area to maintain as main streets. Corner lots also usually have access to the garage on the side street.
Mr. Weir?
Okay.
Time's up. Thank you.
Okay.
We will—we will be addressing this. There might even be some comments this evening.
Okay. My—one last comment is, I just don't think it's fair or practical—
Understand.
—to do this. Okay.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ronald Neave, Troy resident, to also speak on KO2A. Good evening. Good evening.
I have been a resident of Troy for the past 30 years. I have an extremely large lot, which of the east side of my lot does border Liburnoy. And I have responsibility for the last three years to clear that snow. And I have an excess of 200 feet, pretty close to 300 feet. The situation, the way I'm on a pie-shaped piece of my lot, and I do not have access to Libernoy, other than going cross-country, so to speak, through my backyard, up a hill, to get over and go down a hill to get to the sidewalk. It's very impractical for me to try to clear that snow in the wintertime, especially if there's an accumulation of six inches of snow, to try to get that snow blower through my backyard and out onto Libernoy. Like you say, I live at 38 Gordon Drive, and—which is in Long Lake, and— Like you say, I live at 38 Gordon Drive, and which is in the Long Lake and Libernoy area. I have contacted several people regarding snow removal of that particular piece of property, and it is very impractical for them to do it also because there's no access to it. They claim they cannot park, double-park on Libernoy, and they cannot park on the grass area. And it's not impractical for them to park on the residential street, drive all the way around, over everybody else's snow to get to my snow. So to get that accomplished by an outside concern, I have not had any luck in trying to get that, make that happen. I'll say I'm almost 70 years old now. I've lived there for 30 years. And I know the complaint now is that the city has made all these cutbacks. They don't have the manpower. In my comment, which kind of backs up the fellow who was talking before me, you had the money 30 years ago, and I can, excuse me, on that hand, many times that Libernoy was plowed on the sidewalk. I just wanted to make you aware of it. I know, I thought it was going to be an agenda, and this is my first meeting I've ever attended, but I thought it was going to be kind of like discussed tonight. I guess I already missed that in previous meetings, and it's coming up for both on the next meeting. So I wanted to voice my concerns and kind of have you realize the unique situation that I am in. And I understand that there is some properties that are not going to fall into this, that I read tonight on this website here for this, but it doesn't look like I'm going to qualify for that, even though I am in a land-lack situation. I thank you for your ears tonight, and hopefully we can make some accommodation, make things happen. I thank you.
Thank you. If you hang around for a little bit, I think we might talk about this a little bit this evening. Our next speaker is Jim Warpatinsky, Troy resident, to speak on I-3 and I-5. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, city staff, city residents. Yeah, on I-3, you're going to have a closed session to evaluate our wonderful city manager, Brian Kishnik, and I just want to give you some help. We've all seen the scale from 1 to 10. I never use the ones and tens. One means you're a total loser, and two means you're perfect, or close to it. In the case of Mr. Kishnik, I'd rate him a 10, and I suggest you do also. You know better than I do what he's done in the last 12 months here, but I just want to single out three things that meant a lot to me. First of all, Mayor, we give you a lot of credit for unifying this council, and you deserve a lot of credit. I also think Brian Kishnik was instrumental in that, too. I think as he came in, and as you all saw how swift he was, and kind of coalesced around him and accepted him, it kind of made you more accepting of each other. So that's the first thing that I think he did. The second thing I've talked about before was he did these budget study sessions for you all, and educated the council on budgets. That's the first time in my nine years of council watching that I felt the council people, the majority of the council people, actually understood what they were voting on with the budget. So that was the second thing I thought he did was great. And of course, the more recent thing was the DDA bonds, where he devised a wonderful plan to restructure the district and make the DDA whole, the bondholders whole, and most importantly, kept the Troy residents whole. So thank you very much, Mr. Kishnik. Since I have a few more minutes, I also want to mention I-5 and the amendment for the city code to allow non-certified people write parking tickets that Chief Mayor put on here. And I want to commend Chief Mayor for thinking outside the box on this, instead of just doing like some people would do, complaining, you know, they don't have enough people, whatever, he's looking for different solutions to do things. So according to the write-up, it's going to be tried at the Somerset. Hopefully, that's successful, and then it could extend beyond that. I'm hopeful it will, and that possibly maybe he can even extend that in the future to other things, you know, for fireworks violations or something, whatever it might be. But I just think that's, that's great, and I want to commend Chief Mayor. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. That concludes the people that have signed up for public comment for items on the agenda. Our next order of business is city council, city administration response and reply to the public comment. I know that K is a, it's not on the agenda, but it's for the next meeting, but I wonder if I could get City Manager Kishnik just to kind of tell the residents what we're thinking in regards to the examples that they brought up this evening.
Right. So thank you, Mayor, and city council, and everyone. This has been a difficult issue that was raised, that the council has tried to put as much information and analysis together, and in a large city, to determine all the properties that are affected, whether it be unsafe conditions, difficult parcels. So what staff has come up with, and that we're prepared to present at the next meeting, is to change the length of time and the depth of snow. Ice would still need to be cleared, but depth of snow would change to three inches, and you'd have 48 hours to also respond. So it's meant to provide leniency throughout the ordinance in terms of what we're proposing. And again, we had a study session, there hasn't been any conversation at the council table. It's simply what we're trying to do. In addition to that, in terms of difficult properties, we're looking at not doing this through the ordinance, and because it's, difficult properties are difficult to determine, number one, and instead do that during the November 25 session, where we look at the City of Troy and the past, what's happened for the past 35 years, and what happened, quite frankly, as a result of the extremely difficult but very critical decisions that the city management and city council made post-2008, that has created a situation where the City of Troy is a success story, and has the financial capacity to be solvent and be doing very well, including a AAA bond rating today. So to look at those properties that are difficult to determine, but identify them outside of the ordinance process, and see if there's some compromise that we can make, because the gentleman that spoke tonight, both of them, and then the others at the previous study session, raised great points. And we're trying to come up with what's the best way to approach that, to make it fair, but not put an undue burden on the tax, the total tax burden, total taxpayers of the City of Troy. Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me, because I'm aware of kind of what's going on behind the scenes. I think what we're trying to say is that we are going to address those issues administratively, but we can't write an ordinance for every situation, and we don't want to do that. I talked with City Attorney Bloom today. We don't want to get to a point where we have an ordinance that restricts us somewhere down the line, when we may be back in the same position that we were in four years ago. So I do think there's a consensus on this council that there is a sympathy for people that can't get to those sidewalks that were spoke about this evening, and we will be addressing those administratively. Okay? So I don't know if City Attorney Bloom wants to say any more than that, but that's my take on it anyways.
Mayor, I can just add to that, that the ordinance, it basically has the responsibility for sidewalk maintenance, and that is placed on the property owners. However, council does have the ability, and will be talking about this, I'm sure, when it talks about its budget. So, you know, there is the ability for some budgetary resources to be devoted to having the city take on those responsibilities.
Correct. And November the 25th, we will have a study session where we will be talking about fund balance, and we will be talking about Pure Troy, and this is an item within Pure Troy. So please stay tuned. We'll have a, we'll have a lengthy discussion on how we're going to use fund balance on November the 25th, to try and restore some of the cuts that were done back in 2009, Any other comments from Councilman Teetz?
Regarding the snow removal issue, what would be extremely helpful for myself and probably the other city council members as well, would be those individuals that are affected by this, is to send us an email with some background about your situation. I think one of the gentlemen brought up a great point, that the city got 100% of the savings, but the gentleman was handed 100% of the bill for his property. And I think that's something that is actually spot-on, that the city truly did get 100% of the savings, and he got 100% of the bill. So I guess I'd be interested to hear more feedback, for those that are watching on television, or those that are here tonight, about if they live on those type of properties, to hear what they have to say and get their feedback. So that's all.
Just keep in mind, there is a cost associated with every sidewalk that we do, so there is a, we cannot tell every resident in Troy that backs up to a main road that we're going to do their sidewalks. But there is definite sympathy for people that cannot get directly to those sidewalks, or they are a hazard, or some good reason why the city should do that snow plowing. Any other comments from council? We have no postponed items this evening. Our first regular business item is boards and committee appointments. And the first one is a mayoral appointment for the Downtown Development Authority, and be it resolved that the Mayor of the City of Troy hereby appoints Mr. Timothy Blair to serve on the Downtown Development Authority Board for the term that expires 9/30/2015. Support. It's moved by the chair and supported by Mayor Protem Fleming that we appoint Timothy Blair to serve on the Downtown Development Authority Board for the term that expires 9/30 of 2015. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Congratulations to Mr. Blair. Next order of business will be covered by Mayor Protem Fleming. Appointment, city council appointments, Mayor Protem Fleming.
Thank you, Mayor. The first one we have is an appointment to the Parks and Recreation Board. Resolved that Troy City Council hereby appoints the following nominated persons, Steve Toth, to serve on the Parks and Recreation Board for the term expiring 9/30/2016.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Fleming and supported by Councilman Campbell that we appoint Steve Toth to the Parks and Recreation Board for the term that expires 9/30/2016. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes, and congratulations to Mr. Toth.
We also have two nominations tonight for Parks and Recreation Board. Resolved that Troy City Council hereby forwards the following nominated persons, Carolyn Noble and David Blum, to serve on the Parks and Recreation Board. Carolyn Noble's term would expire at 9/30/2016. David Blum is a student representative with term expiring 7/31/2014. And we will be dealing with this at the next regular city council meeting.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Fleming and supported by Councilwoman McGinnis that we appoint the names forwarded by Mayor Protem Fleming for the nomination of the Parks and Recreation Board. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next item of business is I-3, a request to convene for a closed session for the city manager evaluation. Councilwoman McGinnis?
Resolved that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268A, City Manager Evaluation.
Support.
Two at once. Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis and supported by Councilman Pennington that we meet in closed session this evening. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-4 is a winter maintenance agreement with the Road Commission for Oakland County. There'll be an introduction by Tim Rishnick, the Department of Public Works Director. Good evening, Tim.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Road Commission for Oakland County has been in, with a contract with the Public Works Department in the City of Troy for the past 12 years. It initiated because the county, back then, were losing staffing and funding. Their position today is far worse than it was back then, and their situation, they couldn't get to their county roads for minimum 24 hours or more that were inside the City of Troy. It is on the first line with what we do on our major mile roads for the city, and the major portions of this contract that are significant is that we do not recover all funds back. We receive about the total amount annually minus about $70,000 per year over that time. Now, significantly, there was two years, 2008 and '09, that were so snowy, you had to go back to 1918 and 1919 to get that kind of significant snowfall. So taking those out, we really get down to about $17,000 a year for the rest of the years that we have to fund greater than what the county gives us. So with that being said, be glad to answer any further questions.
Questions for Mr. Rishnick? Councilwoman McGinnis?
Just to clarify, having this agreement in place really allows us to plow all of the roads so that they're kept in a similar fashion, correct?
Universal services is what the initial process was aiming at, for all major roads, county and city.
So even though it's a small increase, depending on the year and depending on the snowfall, really what the citizens are looking at is that they can expect the same level of service on all of the roads versus traveling down one road that's a county road and having one level of service, traveling down a different road that's a city road, and having a different level of service, and probably being confused about the fact that they're different.
That's correct. And the way we do that is we have one truck and driver that goes out to each of those routes. There'll be one truck and driver on John R., one on Big Beaver, Long Lake, Square Lake, all of the 14 different, includes an industrial routes, all of the 14 different routes that we have that we initiate on when we first hit a snowstorm.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. Somebody like to move the resolution? Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes, Mayor, I move the resolution I-4 as printed.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Fleming and supported by Councilwoman McGinnis that we approve I-4 as printed. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-5 is an amendment to the Troy City Code Charter 106, traffic allowing persons other than certified police officers to write parking tickets, as allowed by MCL 257.675D. And I know it says on the agenda to be introduced by Ms. Bloom, but I see Chief Mayor and Lieutenant Harden here to answer questions and make a presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. As you indicated, City Attorney Bloom and I discussed this, and felt it was best if I presented. If there's any legal questions, she'll take over for me. What we have before you tonight is, as stated, is a request to allow us to change our procedure, allow others to write parking tickets. With me tonight is Lieutenant Russ Harden. Russ headed this project, working with the City Attorney's Office and Clemess to obtain the necessary equipment. The reduction in staffing within the PD is costless to evaluate alternative methods of policing within the community. Working with the Somerset Collection, we want to have them be a pilot program to trial this new program, to see if we can have civilians writing parking tickets for us. It works out for us, because we won't get the Working with the Somerset Collection, we want to have them be a pilot program to trial this new program to see if we can have civilians writing parking tickets for us. It works out for us because we won't get the calls for service on parking complaints and it works out for the Somerset Collection because it will allow them to have their people enforcing the parking laws and assisting with the ingress and egress of vehicles inside of their controlled private parking area. So, it's a win-win for us. At the same time, the Clemis system that we're involved with for all of our police technology and our police databases has developed a new program that allows handheld devices. So, everything's come together at the right time. Lieutenant Harden has worked on this project for quite a while. I wanted him to briefly explain the hardware that makes this possible. Lieutenant.
Mayor?
Good evening.
Council staff? Just real quick, as the chief said, we got the handheld ticket writing devices through Clemis and it's compatible with the current way that we write tickets, which is all electronic. Works off a Bluetooth technology to a portable printer. And then it'll print just a little ticket like this that the unfortunate recipient might get, but it'll be, given as you know, we have our retail liaison officer works for Somerset. He'll take this device at the end of each day, download in a docking station. The tickets will be sent, transferred electronically to the supervisor who will review the ticket and forward it out to the court electronically as well.
Thank you. So, state law requires that local police departments administer the program. As the lieutenant explained, we will be administering the program. We're going to offer eight hours of training that'll be done by our officer that's assigned to the Somerset Collection. We think we've met in dealing with the City Attorney's Office, we're confident we've met all the requirements of the state law. So, we are asking that the city council amend Chapter 106 to allow this. And we're open to take any other questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions from council? Councilwoman McGinnis?
I know that we're looking at doing this because hopefully at the end of the day it will be more efficient for us and we won't be using the resources of our police officers to monitor the parking situation, but rather we'll transfer it to someone else. But how much oversight do you think is going to be required from the police department still to train? And then you had mentioned a supervisor that will review the tickets before they go to the court. Is that someone from the police department as well?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to, I know that you're recommending this and so I'll be supporting it, but I just want to make sure that there's a clear trade-off where we'll see a big reduction in the resources that we have to use from the police department by switching this over.
Where we're at right now is our parking enforcement is way down because the officers are busy on other activities. So, we'll have, I would anticipate an increase in our parking enforcement. You're correct, it isn't a totally free, it's going to cost staff time. We're going to have staff time to train, so we'll be training people over there. It requires eight hours of training. So, the initial time, we'll be able to do several people at one time, several of the security staff. And Officer Garcher, who's assigned there, will be responsible for that training. And then the supervisors, essentially the tickets come back in a queue on the computer and they go through and just make sure that the form and substance of them is correct. So, we'll take care of that. Parking enforcement does tend to cause a lot of complaints, so we're hopeful that we're going to be able to shift the burden of the complaints to the Somerset Collection. This is a pilot program, so we're going to have to see how it goes. But you've identified some of the things that we've identified as issues that we're going to monitor before we extend this program out.
Great.
We're very comfortable with the Somerset Collection, they're very professional and we're very comfortable with their people there. It's an excellent site for us to do a pilot program at.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Teetz?
Did you mean complaints as in people complain someone's parked illegally or I didn't understand?
We get them both ways. As Lieutenant Harden referred to, people seldom like getting parking tickets.
I can understand that.
So, and we get complaints from people that are complaining about people parking. So, it's not a win-win for the police department anyway.
All right. But, so if someone did complain, they would end up talking to the police department then? Is that?
We anticipate it could be both.
Okay.
Till we iron this out. The ideal circumstance would be Somerset would handle it. If it turns into a police complaint, we'll handle it. We're not going to turn anybody away if they have a complaint on service.
Councilman Pennington?
Chief, you mentioned that it's a pilot program. Is there any other cities that have implemented this at this time?
There are other cities that allow this. There's other, very similar circumstances, other private malls and that. I'm not sure in Oakland County, other than the city of Novi. Novi has volunteers that do it in Oakland County. So, that's it for Oakland County communities.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Royal Oak, Beaumont Hospital, their security has been doing this for a long time. Southfield, Farmington, there are few cities have implemented this. And they have, we're targeting specific professional security organizations where they have generally used just volunteers. And what I do want to point out is that they're only allowed by law to write 10 specific parking violations on their property. And so, the device will be engineered, I guess if you will, so they can only write those 10 tickets. They can't do anything outside of what we're going to authorize, the chief's going to authorize.
Okay. Just a question, I know probably the answer to the first part of this, but I didn't see anything in here about any monetary advantage for Somerset Collection in the parking. So, I'm going to assume that they don't get any cut of the tickets that they write.
That's correct. There is no, there's no monetary advantage for Somerset. It's mainly for, from their point of view, it's to allow their security staff to enhance the experience for people, being able to have good ingress and egress onto their property.
Okay.
They don't get, there's no percentage of any violations or anything, it comes back to them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Pennington?
I'd like to move that we, I five amendment to the Troy City Code as written.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Pennington and supported by Councilman Campbell that we approve I five as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bitter?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next order of business is the consent agenda. Anyone on council wish to pull an item? I would like to pull J seven. The bid waiver for Pelco camera system and access control expansion in the police department. Any other items? So, I will move that the Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item J seven, which shall be considered after the consent agenda items.
Support.
Moved by the chair and supported by Councilwoman McGinnis that we approve all items on the consent agenda except J seven. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bitter?
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. I pulled J seven because I'd like the police department to give a brief presentation on this item. I think it's very noteworthy that the citizens and residents know the potential of these, this camera system. So, I've talked to Chief Mayor and asked him if he would be willing to do that this evening. So, Chief Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. This is part of our ongoing effort to enhance the security of these city-owned facilities within the City of Troy. You may recall that back in 2004, when we did the police and fire addition to the City Hall, we went into a new security system that allows us to control access to the building via proximity cards and card readers and allows us to monitor the interior of the police building. We've since then have been expanding that project out to other city facilities and this is our latest effort in that we continually budget for it with the effort to expand out. What we hope to do tonight is briefly discuss the coverage that we're anticipating and to show some of the camera views that we have. What we're looking for is the installation of 25 additional Internet Protocol cameras. I'll keep talking till I see something show up on the screen.
Somebody's sweating down here.
Yeah. I should introduce Ryan Wolf, our technology manager from the police department, who is hooking up the computer system right now. What we have is, we're going to be installing 25 additional Internet Protocol cameras within the City Hall facility. And what Ryan has passed around now is just a sample of the, on an Apple computer, what it looks like. We have our bank of camera monitors within the police department that we watch and we have on a regular basis. The technology with those is going to allow us to expand into the transit center, once the transit center is totally up and running. And that's what this is going to allow us to do. Part of this project is to allow those cameras to be viewed in the police department and part of the expansion. It isn't as good a presentation unless I can point to something, so I'll breeze through this. We're going to have access control within additional doors within the City Hall facility. The training center, the cameras there are going to be able to be monitored at the police department facility as well as the transit center. The property room, we're adding cameras because we want to make sure that we can keep good account of all of our property in there. So, it's for our safety and the safety of the property officer. There's a lot of network hardware in there. And basically, as evidenced by the computer that was going around there, is this is going to allow some of the executive staff within the police department, department heads from other departments, to be able to look at the camera system to see if things that impact them are being done correctly or what's going on in their facilities. A good example of that, and it's timely, we've talked about snow removal and that tonight, is the DPW will be able to check out via the camera system whether certain sites have had the snow plowed and that and be able to check the snow instead of calling us and depending on some police sergeants to ascertain whether the roadways are snow-covered enough and that. So, I regret that I didn't have the video portion of this, but I'm stand ready to ask and answer any questions that we may have. And Ryan, you might as well come over with me so you can answer any questions.
I did see it working this afternoon, it looked great. And I think we could see the transit center as we speak live in the police department, correct? Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yeah, just approximately, how many cameras will we have functional when this is fully operational?
When the project's complete, 228 cameras.
228.
Total. I forget the number, that will be a part of the enduro system. We have some older sites that still need to be updated.
Councilman Pennington?
So, they'll be able to access this with any handheld wireless device, all those cameras?
That's correct.
And then pick and choose between all the different cameras?
Yeah.
How many cameras at the transit center? Do we know?
I don't have that exact number, but it's a neighborhood of 25 cameras monitoring that building.
What that's going to allow us to do at the transit center is, we've been, since the facility's been open, we have some of the cameras working now. We're waiting, once this project's done, the rest of the cameras will open up to us. We're able to view what goes on at the transit center. We're able to, say there's a call for service over there, somebody gets locked out and they're there early for a train, we'll be able to look on the monitors, see who it is, once they activate a push button, which will come right into police dispatch. So, we'll be able to see what's going on at the transit center. If there's a problem with a train that comes in late or early and someone needs to get over to the other platform, we'll be able to allow access into the facility to do that. So, we'll be able to monitor what's going on in the facility 24/7. If the facility's closed and there's motion within the facility, and this carries out to any of the other cameras, any of the other areas that are covered by our cameras, just using the transit center to illustrate the point. If somebody's in the transit center after hours and we've set up the parameters for when there should be no movement within the transit center, we'll get an alarm, we'll know that there's a problem there, we'll be able to dispatch officers. So, Ryan refers to as analytics, I refer to it as just the kind of stuff you do in a computer that'll allow us to be able to keep track of some of these other facilities and see what's going on. So, the technology's getting there, we just got to catch up and spend the money to get there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know you feel bad that the camera didn't work. Here. I will move item J seven as printed.
Support.
Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Pennington that we approve J seven as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bitter?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next item are future memorandums and council items. I will note that K one is an announcement of a public hearing for November the 11th for a PUD at 3088 Kilmer and also an announcement of a public hearing for November the 11th, conditional rezoning application for the Troy Marriott Hotels, west side of Stevenson Highway, north of 14 Ma Road. So, if you would like to make a comment on either one of those public hearings, please be here for November the 11th. K two is a memorandum submitted for Pura Troy, the ordinance amendment for consideration on November the 11th, 2013. Our next item of business is public comment for items not on the agenda. Please remember the words that I read before the first public comment. And our first speaker is Troy resident Manish Baxi.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
And city council members. I have a very simple point to make is with the Festival of Lights Diwali that we just had the proclamation for, and I wish happy Diwali to all the members of the community as well. The festival of light is very important because it brings light and obviously removes darkness. So, let's talk about some of the things which most people are in dark about. I'm reading this from the letter from the city manager. It says, "Fund balance history. The 2013-2014 adopted budget for general funds expenditures is $53,859,800. And the ending unassigned fund balance is estimated at $23,454,866, which leaves our unassigned fund balance at 43.5%. Our reserve policy states that the city strives to maintain a minimum unassigned general fund balance of 10% to 17% of the general fund budget. Comparatively, 43.5% is significantly higher than our reserve policy. My question is, how many Troy citizens and taxpayers know that we have $15 million, which is five times what it needs to run the city library? Again, I think it is very clear that most citizens are thinking, or were thinking at one time obviously, that we were running out of money. And from what I realized late, another information which will be available soon, and the Troy will have the auditors and other reports in December, we might have as many as $6.2 million more. All that means is Janice Daniels was right. We did not need to raise taxes for the city library. The Troy City Transit Center is a debacle. We are building on something we don't even have property rights to. To me, I don't understand why the citizens are not aware to the extent they need to be. And for whatever reason, today, my goal is very simple. Let's bring the light to what it needs to be on what exactly is going on in the city with all this information. And for me, November is very simple, the opportunity to bring back Janice Daniels for the right perspective. Thank you.
Our next speaker is resident James Savage.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council. In the last 15 years that I have attended... In the last 15 years that I have attended these council meetings, I have had differences of opinion with many council members regarding specific issues. In retrospect, I think most of the conflicting issues were actually the policies and methods of former city manager John Zurlag, and not with the individual council members. I have in the past, and still do, have sincere respect for all council members for their commitment to serve the city. I understand how difficult it is to balance the common good, the individual needs of your constituents, and your own personal feelings and opinions. Councilwoman McGinnis, this is your last council meeting. Your professionalism and understanding of the issues has not gone unnoticed. I had hoped at one time I would change your mind on the transit system. As you may recall, I tried. Maybe in two, three years, we can talk on that issue again. I met your father on a few occasions many years ago, and I am very confident that he is very proud of you. I still try to make my father proud of me in everything I do. Had he lived, he would be 118 years old now, and even wiser than he ever was. And now, I thank you for your service to the city. I wish you luck and success in your next endeavor, and always let your conscience be your guide. And thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Our next speaker is resident Nicholas Scheracero.
Good evening, council members. $23 million in surplus funds. Why? What's it for? Some of it should be held as a reserve. We know that, about $8 million. In addition, the extra $15 million this year will probably grow significantly. Some council members have told me $3 million, some said $4. I think it's gonna be closer to $7 million increase. What should it be used for? The new transit center? No, bad idea. The DDA debacle? Definitely not. Several people suggested we should hire more police officers. They obviously have not talked with council members, who have advised that we are short only eight police personnel. In addition, the vacancies have been put into the current budget, but our police department cannot find qualified people to fill these slots. This may result in adding to the budget surplus next year. A council seeker stated that we should put it into infrastructure, which she claims is bad. Although I'm not completely done researching this possibility, I find it is not as bad a situation as she claims. In addition, we should not undertake a situation on roads, water lines, and sewage lines without county, state, and federal government, as well as the Detroit Water Board doing their part. If we do, we'll have another debacle similar to the transit center, which was built on land that we do not own. I believe that taxpayers should be taken into account, and we should give the surplus back. Now, at the last council meeting, a person came to this microphone and made several statements concerning the Troy area Tea Party. In the two years that I have attended these council meetings on a regular basis, only two members of the Tea Party have spoken here. Neither one of us has spoken as Tea Party members. The opinions given by both of us were our own. And Ms. McGinnis, again, thank you for your service, and good luck in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sandra Miller, Troy resident.
You know, I'm the biggest fan of the Troy Library, and I just found out this last week, I meet a lot of the people that work at the Troy Library. I actually meet them at Oakland Community College. They work in there part-time. I've met them in the Warren Library. I guess it turns out, they made the few full-time librarians, they made them part-time, they took all their benefits away from them, they took all their healthcare insurance away, and apparently only the director and the assistant director are full-time, and they do get healthcare insurance from what I was told. I don't know if the residents know about this, but that's a shame that these people went to college as many years as they did, and received their degrees, and they're librarians, and now they're working at the Troy Library as part-time librarians. They don't have any benefits, they don't have any healthcare insurance. So I hope the residents understand what happened to our great library we used to have. If you compare this library to the other libraries, we're not there any longer. Just the condition inside the library is bad. If you check out Rochester, Clausen, they all have nice new carpeting and new chairs, and what happened there, I'm not sure what happened. Like I mentioned last time, the carpeting should have been replaced before the financial difficulties. But it's a shame that I see these people working at the Troy Library, they're actually working at Oakland Community College and Warren Library, and they don't even have any type of health insurance. I mean, what type of people do we have working in our library? I guess we could hire people and pay them $8 an hour. You constantly have to have new resources in the library, you have to have new books coming in. Is it going to happen to the library? I mean, are we out of money completely for the library? There has always been an issue, I know it's part of the computers are missing out of the library too. On the weekends, I'm not able to use a computer, I have to go down to the college and use the computer at the college down the road. It's, the whole computer room is full of people. She took part of the computers away. I know there always has been a problem where they have kids on the adult computers. We have a state statute, you have to provide filtered and unfiltered computers, and I noticed that there's kids on the computers in the adult room, and they're not supposed to be. There'll be times, there'll be a long line of adults. They even have adults in the teen section. The teen section was created for teens to be using the computers, and not for adults. There's also a section for children. It does look like there's mainly children in that section. But, I mean, what happened to our Troy Library? What happened? Do we need a new director to come in, who can run our Troy Library the way it should be ran? I mean, when you're violating state statute, and you're having kids on non-filtered computers, there's a problem. There's always been a problem like that way at the Troy Library. I don't see it being addressed. There's been comment, comment after comment after comment made to the library, and I don't see the director handling that problem either. You know, I don't see a lot of the problems, the programs are bad there, it's poor taste.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jim Warpatinsky, Troy resident.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
You may recall, I was here last April, and I commended the council for coming together after having been divided for quite a while. And I said I wanted you all to stay, and nothing has changed about that, except Councilwoman McGinnis has upset my little apple cart, and has decided to pursue other interests. But I do want to thank you for your four years of meritorious service. I think you've been a real blessing, your bright young lady, and I'm sure you'll be successful in the future. Another thing, being a bit of a male chivalrous pig that I am, I think it's nice to have at least one woman on the council to kind of have a calming influence on some of the older guys up there and what have you. So, in addition to your skill, I think that is helpful to the smooth running of things as well. Both my friends and enemies know that I set the bar pretty high, both for myself and for other people, and most people fail my scrutiny. You however, pass with flying colors, you met my expectations, I thank you for that. I can say, it's good to have a woman on the council, and hopefully you'll be replaced by one that can also be a calming influence, but I'm not gonna stump for one up here, because this is not the time and the place to do it. But, again, thank you very much, and I wish you all success in the future. And when and if you run for another office, you have my vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I don't know if the next speaker's gonna make it through his three minutes or not, but Dan McGinnis, Troy resident, is our next speaker. I thought he was responsible for these flowers, but maybe not. Oh. That makes sense. Hi Dad.
Good evening, Dean.
Good evening.
Mayor Slater, excuse me, elemental to the council. You know, four years ago, I had a conversation with my daughter about, you know, what she could do to give back to the community, other than the practice of law and living in the community. We talked about a number of, talked about a number of different venues that she could have taken, school board or city council, and we decided on city council. Little did I know, and little did she know, that the calm city council that we had been used to in this city was about ready not to be calm anymore. And I remember, I guess in the middle of the debacle of the library, and in the middle of the failure of the village, she came into my office with a tear in her eye, and she said, Daddy, what did you get me into? But you know, Maureen, I have seen you, from the little morphed girl that sat over in that corner at the first council meeting, blossom into the most wonderful woman and wonderful asset that this community has ever seen. And I sit here and cannot tell you, and it's impossible to describe how proud I am of you. And for any of you all that are here that have children, may you hope and pray that your children rise to the heights that my daughter, Maureen McGinnis, has. She makes me so proud. And I think she makes your mother proud. Her mother never takes much credit, so I wish she would stand up. I don't know if you all know, this is Burl, who is Maureen's mother, who is equally as responsible.
Come on up, come on up here, please.
Equally responsible, if not more responsible, for this young woman. From the little kid that went to Schroeder Elementary, to graduating from Troy High, to going to school out west, and then going to law school, she's as responsible as I am, and I'm sure that she stands here as proud of this young woman as I am. And I just want you to know, Maureen, that your dad couldn't be prouder.
You got, you have 40 seconds left, Don, do you want to introduce? How about bring your husband up? Just bring your husband up. Kevin.
I didn't mean, Kevin, to bring flowers into, yours obviously outdo mine, but everybody should know that this is a wonderful man and a great son-in-law, and I'm so proud also to have him in the family. Kevin Kleinsider is Maureen's husband, they just moved to the north section of Troy, not too far from me, so I've been doing a lot of, you know, home repairs for them, but he is very lucky to have her, and she's very lucky to have him.
Thank you. Okay, who wants to follow that? How about Dan Bray?
Who says a lawyer can speak on anything for three minutes?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Smoke and mirrors, that's what Troy gets from your city council, Dan Slater. Last meeting, you and your cronies sat up here and congratulated yourselves that the TTC was on budget and on schedule. Well, that at best is all smoke and mirrors, isn't it? After hearing you, I Googled Troy Transit Center, and here's what came up. May 3rd, Detroit Free Press, quote, "Fleming said, 'We're looking forward to opening this up in August or September.' June 25, CNG News, 'We continue to be on schedule for completion in early September,' said the Troy City engineer. July 22, Troy Patch, 'Construction is expected to be completed in August. According to city officials, a grand opening is expected to be scheduled in September.' August 11, Crane's Detroit Business, quoting Lori Bloom, 'We expect a grand opening for the center to be around September 1.' August 27, Detroit Free Press, 'The center is scheduled to open in late September, so Troy's leaders are scrambling to find federal tax money that would buy the 2.7 acres, and for a price that could run into millions of dollars.'" So your transit center is on schedule and on budget, only from a warped politician's point of view. That is, every time there's a delay, you just change the schedule to match, and then go about proclaiming, "It's on schedule, it's on schedule." And the emperor has clothes. Sure, we all get it. So, smoke and mirrors. Here's other parts of your list. Over the last four years, you and your budget have illegally confiscated over $23 million in taxes that should still be in our pockets by city law. You told us you were closing our nature center, our museum, our community center, and our library, because the city was out of money. But then, the city pocketed $6.4 million in profits that same year. You told voters there would be no expensive special election to pay for after the recall. And of course, your state told you differently. You told us that the TTC would be on time, on budget, and on land the city owned. So why is it that we should vote for the candidate that you endorse to join you on city council? Ellen Hoderek is a former city employee, crony of yours, who has for four years spoken here in support of every one of the smoke and mirrors crap measures I've just mentioned. Only one candidate in the council race has a proven track record, a history of always voting for the people's wishes, and standing up to all of your smoke and mirrors, and for that, you recalled her. Janice Daniels is the only candidate who offers Troy a clear, open representative voice on Troy's city council.
Our next speaker is Dan Fair, Troy resident. Good evening, Mr. Fair, good to see you again.
Good evening, council staff.
Could you see if they can get up?
Test, test, test. I have come here this evening to thank you all for your hard work in making this a wonderful and safe city to shop, work, live, and raise our children. I've also come here to inform all of our Troy fellow citizens as to how we can help you and ourselves continue to make this city that we proudly call home. November 5th, voters are being asked to choose several new council members, and to consider a school bond that is a zero increase to the current mileage rate. The benefits of the bond include strengthening the safety and security of our schools, enhancing technology district-wide, purchasing new buses, and providing a healthy, suitable learning spaces for all of our children. As a retiree and someone without kids in the system now, I truly believe that the approval of this school bond will also help maintain everyone's property values. With the help of all Troy citizens, we can make a difference in the quality of life for our children and generations of Troy School District students to come. Good luck to all the council candidates, good luck, Ms. McGinnis, in your future endeavors. Please join me in voting yes to the Troy School Bond. Thank you again, and keep up all the good work.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ellen Hoderek, Troy resident.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. I had a number of people contact me saying they wanted to come speak tonight, for reasons I'm not even going to talk about, but it's pertaining an election that's coming up. And I thought you might all appreciate that I asked them to not do that, that we don't need to use council time in that way, and that I would speak for myself. What I would like to focus on is you as a body of people. This is your last night meeting together as a team, and you deserve huge congratulations. Mayor Slater stepped in, this council came together, we saw it. We don't all see eye to eye all the time, but we're seeing you come together and come to decisions. One of the greatest things I saw was the budget study sessions, the special study sessions you all endured last March. Above and beyond the three study sessions you normally do, the very detailed Above and beyond the three study sessions you normally do, the very detailed staff presentations, where you do see our serious infrastructure needs, our public safety needs presented, where our library stands and why it stands in that position presented. I thank you for going through that process and for sharing it with the residents. You're about to lose one of your members, and I think we need to focus tonight on what a great asset you have been for four years. You have the respect of everyone I talked to, everyone, whether they agree with me on where I've stood on city issues or not. Maureen McGinnis, you've been an outstanding role model to my kids, to me, to the residents, with your father. We are all very proud of you. Thank you for serving, thank you to this council. Hopefully, we can move forward positively. November 5th, winning looks like three outstanding candidates coming together with this team, moving forward together. And let's hope Troy can do that. Thank you.
That concludes those that have signed up to speak this evening on public comment for items not on the agenda. There are no council referrals this evening, so we will move to council comments. Who would like to go first? Okay, I'll go first. It would be very easy to sit up here and talk about the inaccuracies that were portrayed tonight about the fund balance, but I'm not going to do that. I've talked to the city manager, I'm going to prepare a document that deals with facts and not what we heard tonight, and that should be coming out within the next couple of weeks. But more importantly, I just need to talk about Maureen. Because over four years ago, Maureen and I were sitting in the back room of a TV station waiting to do our first debate against each other. And that's the first time that I met Maureen. I knew her dad forever, but it's the first time I met Maureen. And we both looked at each other and we said, "What in the world are we doing?" And we said that many, many more times within the last four years, I'll tell you that. But I can tell you that after that debate, I knew you would be a great asset to the city of Troy and city council. And of course, the citizens of Troy knew that also, and they elected her to city council in 2009. And I was lucky enough to be with you when that happened. Well, these past four years have been probably the most difficult of any council member ever. If somebody could just shut that phone off, I'd appreciate it, thank you. You never wavered. You never put yourself above the interests of Troy, and you were a main part of a team that's responsible for the success story that we have here today. Even though people want to come up to this podium and take away from our success story, we have a success story, and we're going to tell that success story over the next couple of weeks. We are alive and well because of you. You always did your homework, you always were prepared for every single decision that was made. Some of them were gut-wrenching. When we had to lay people off, we had to downsize, we had to privatize, all of the tough decisions, you were there for that. But, Maureen, you can hold your head high, you can walk away from here because you are a true asset to this city, and I can tell you I will truly miss you up here. Thank you for everything that you've done. Best wishes to you and your growing family, to Kevin, your parents, and God bless you. You are my friend. She went, she graduated from high school with my daughter, so she is like a daughter to me, too, and just thank you, thank you so much for all you've done for this city. Any other comments? Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Maureen, I think Mayor Slater said it very well, so I'm not going to add much to that except just to say thank you. It's been a pleasure serving with you, and I wish you all the best in the future. God bless you.
Councilman Henderson.
Yeah, I have also had the pleasure of working with Maureen for the last couple of years, and these last two years have been real eye-opening for me as well. And I appreciate the compassion she has towards newbies and how she's able to tutor us to kind of get up to speed and understand what this is all about. And when you have that baby, Kelly will be happy to babysit anytime for you. We need another grandkid.
Councilman Pennington.
Well, like I keep saying, I've only been here for a short time, but Maureen was the first one to reach out to me. I had known Dane and Dave, and when my name come up as one of the six that were under consideration, Maureen was the first one to come to me and ask me what was I thinking and what I was about, and she reached out to me, and I appreciate that. And she has been a role model to anyone who would look up to be in city council, and I'm very proud to call her my friend.
Councilman Campbell, were you, did you want to say something?
I don't mind you do this, this is great. Of course, I'm going to miss her more than you, Fair. We've had a lot of fun. We had a lot of fun, it's been great, it's been great knowing you and Kevin, and look forward to a long relationship and friendship. It's been, it's been a lot of fun. Even in the times it's been a little dark up here, it's been a lot of fun with you. We wish you all the best, you did a great job.
Councilman Teetz.
And lastly, thank you very much as well, and I'm sorry you're leaving. I will be the only member left of the youth caucus, so I will try to represent us well as the people under the age of forty, and so you will be missed, and thank you for all your friendship.
Councilman Pennington.
I've got one more comment. Many of you probably don't know, but Maureen is going to have a baby. You can't really tell, but I want to congratulate her up front, and pending motherhood, and Godspeed.
Any comments from the city administration?
Just, Maureen, thank you for everything that you have done, and obviously it has been a pleasure, and I have a feeling that we're going to be seeing you out there again.
So since I'm a fairly new arrival, I will just continue with the light metaphor. There are some people who use a wooden match that burns their own fingers for their light. Maureen uses LED. She's top-notch, first-class, A1. Thank you, Maureen.
Well, Maureen, did you want to say anything, or?
I don't want to say anything that will ruin it for anyone. Kind of leaving on good terms, at least. Just really briefly, obviously, in the days and the weeks that have led up to tonight, my last meeting, I've had a lot of time to reflect, and I've realized a couple of things. One is that I think things have been moving so fast over the last four years that I really haven't had time to reflect on how much has happened. So the last four weeks, since I really started thinking about my last night, I've been able to put a lot of things in perspective. And I can tell you that this experience tonight, every meeting that I've been at, and I want to point out that I've been at just about every single meeting, has so many amazing things have happened, that this experience has been absolutely humbling, and I really owe it to everyone that gave me a chance when they voted for me in 2009, but other than that, everyone that has since come behind myself and the council and given me an opportunity to try to give back just a little bit. I think if I, if I really were to measure it out in some way, if I could do that, I really don't think that I could have possibly given back as much as I've gained from this experience. So I appreciate that more than anyone will know. I'm going to have absolutely wonderful memories. There were some bad moments, but somehow, when I look at it all, it's been nothing but a positive experience. It's been a very personally fulfilling experience. I've made absolutely great friends on this council, the council that came before. I remember the first time that I sat up here in the seat, it was over there, and I was sitting by Mary Kerwin and Robin and all the other people that had been around for so long, and they knew every person in the audience, and they knew every staff member, and they knew every council member so well. And I thought, oh my God, I'm never going to be able to have this figured out. I don't know if I've really figured it out to that extent, but I can sit up here tonight, leaving and having it be my last meeting, and truly say that I feel like I get it. The people that come before us here, the staff members that come to work every day with nothing but the goal of making this community a great place, it's absolutely inspiring. So the opportunities that I've had over the last four years, I'm nothing but thankful for. It's very bittersweet. You may see me just hanging out on Mondays because I don't really know what I'm going to do with myself now that it's over. Sorry, Kevin, maybe one. But thank you so much for everything, for your friendship, for everything that I've learned from the people that I've had the chance to work with, and from the residences and the businesses here that have reminded me what a great decision I made to come back here, to live here. I'm not going anywhere, I'm here to stay, and I could not be more proud about that. So thank you guys so much for everything.
Thank you. It's a good thing that's near the end. Does anybody have anything they want to add about the reports on the agenda this evening? Anything on the department reports? Okay, we will be in recess and reconvene in the boardroom in ten minutes for a closed session. Thank you for coming this evening.